Good evening and welcome to the panel select board office here. The regular meeting Thursday, April 23rd, 2015. We have agenda approval, approval of the minutes for 416-15, warrants, mail. New business, Bennington County Sheriff's Department regarding law enforcement. Residents concerned about the fire district number two solar proposal. And a discussion on fuel. And old business, we're going to revisit the variable rate ordinance and the enforcement section. So...
We're going to have to table the minutes because we don't have the call.
Okay. We'll have to table the minutes. Anybody who want to approve the...
I'm moved to approve the agenda.
With the tabling of the minutes?
That's correct.
Okay.
A second.
Well, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain, I wasn't here for that. Warrants, we'll move to those, right there. The payroll warrant in the amount of $7,670.36. That is from 419 to 424. And for the town of Powell, accounts payable in the amount of $17,956.08. Some of your bigger items on that were health insurance, I believe. And wastewater treatment, O&M, and payroll transfer. Those are some of your big items on that. Only two warrants tonight, that's nice. What's your pleasure on the warrants?
Moved to approve them. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mail. Lot of mail tonight. First thing in the mail is to the Board of Selectmen from the panel transfer station supervisor regarding the transfer station repairs and the town's trailer at North Powell. It's pretty detailed here. There's pictures of the trailer, et cetera. Things are going to be taken care of, from the sounds of it. Tom, he seems to be doing a good job on everything so far, so... Also in the mail, the Vermont Agency of Transportation, Department of Motor Vehicles, uniform municipal excess weight permit for Murray R. Lewis of Powell, Vermont. There's no sticker on this, but I suppose we have to sign it, don't we? Yeah. What's your pleasure on this? Move. You move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And from People's United Bank, this is a resolution directly presented to the Board for approval. This is to set up an account to hold excess tax sale dollars until claimed by family or state. And it has to be signed here, so...
Moved to approve it.
Moved to sign?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. And the next one is from Michelle Peckrow.
Oh.
Okay. Right here. About the solar site, et cetera, which I'm sure you'll be talking about a little later since you are here, so I don't think it's necessary I read this to you. Okay, thank you.
[laughing].
And also we have from the Vermont Better Backroads Grants Program application. We have a few of these here, and these are going in. The first one is grant amount requesting 1463 with an estimated total cost of $1883. What's your pleasure on this first one? And this is for... Let me see, where was it again? Am I missing it here? Engineering service. Oh, okay. The southern 1,200 foot of Man Hill Road, Ladbrokes Road, the downslope in that area, and 1,000 feet of Ladbrokes Road at an elevation of 680 feet. So it's in that area there. What's your pleasure on this?
Make a motion.
To sign?
Yep. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is from Bill Botso. He received a letter from a constituent on a property concerning what looks like a possible health violation. Forty... He forwarded it to us to see the status of this. As you can see, it is quite a problem. Do you know if our health officer has been advised of this?
I really don't know who's spoken to who, but we've got pictures, as you can see, attached to that.
Right.
We got them printed out today.
Okay.
In the engine box for when it comes in.
Okay, so we'll copy this letter, be with it too? Okay, so we'll...
The whole thing will be sent.
Over to the health officer.
It's going to go over to him anyway.
Thank you. And we have Vermont Better Backroads Grants Program application for 2015 for a correction of an erosion problem, shoulder repair on Snake Hill Road. Again, it's... You've seen this, you look through the pictures. Has to be signed off on. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to sign. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Same thing, Vermont Better Backroads Program, shoulder repair on Carpenter Hill Road. Again, along with pictures and description. What's your pleasure on that?
Motion to sign. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vermont Better Backroads Grants Program for South Stream Road and crossroad drainage. I was on crossroad not too long ago, and that is in rough shape. So hopefully this will get done too. Amount of this one is $8,367. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to sign. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that is the mail for tonight. Welcome, folks. Okay. New business, Bennington County Sheriff's Department concerning our law enforcement. A few, two fine gentlemen. We have Chad Schmidt and Joel Howard of the Sheriff's Department. Welcome. Thanks for spending some of your evening here with us tonight. As you know, we are looking for some type of coverage here in town. And you seem to be the folks that are most qualified and ready and able and willing to help us out here. So I guess basically what we're looking at, or what we'd like to see is, how much coverage do you think the town of Powell needs? What would be the cost? What hours would be considered protected? Is it 24 hours? Is it 12 hours? Is it eight hours? I think that the people of the town have to...
Right.
Know this a little bit. So Chad, if you could enlighten us.
You know, you can hire us to do as little or as much as you want, whether it's 24/7/365 or four hours a week. So that's something that, you know, you, the Board, or the town need to decide, you know, what amount of coverage is adequate. To give you some perspective, the town of Dorset, we used to do anywhere from, at one point it was 56 hours a week because they figured it was eight hours a day, there'd be some proactive coverage. The state police are obviously active, but may only be on a reactive basis where they're not actively patrolling a town, but if you call 911, they're going to respond. When we enter into a contract, we don't necessarily cover the town for... We're not like on an on-call basis normally. That's certainly something we could entertain for a cost. But what happens is, if we contract for you for eight hours a day, we're typically physically here in your town, proactively patrolling for that amount of time that we've allotted for the town. So if somebody calls 911, the state police know we're here, we're going to get sent to the call. So we, in effect, become your primary responders when we're here in the town.
Ooh, I have a question on that. So you... Just in the timeframe that you normally work here, or after-hours, would you respond?
It would normally, typically, and this all depends on however we draft a contract with you. Typically, it would be when we... My deputies go on patrol, they sign on with the state police and say, "I'm going to be in Arlington-Sunderland tonight." From, you know, and they know the hours from, you know, four to midnight.
Right.
So if a call comes in, or a BOL, or something of that nature, the state police know that we're in the town, and they will dispatch us to an incident. So if somebody dials 911 and from the East Arlington Road, they know my deputy's there, they're going to... We're going to be coming up...
From four to midnight, but not so much after.
Right. Unless, you know, if a town wanted to pay for us to be on-call, that's certainly something that we can do. We've never had a town do that. We've never had a town, you know, look at 24/7 coverage. But, you know, anything is... If you've got the money, we can do it. You know, I'm just not funded.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. I wasn't understanding.
Anything that, you know, anything that you want to do, it just takes money. I don't get tax dollars to do this stuff directly from the legislature. So, you know, all the revenue that I get has to be from, through contracts.
So, not being in the law enforcement field, or even close to it by any stretch of the imagination, do you base... What's your hourly... What's an hourly rate? You know, for a patrol car and a fully-trained law enforcement agent such as Joel here, what does that break down into an hour?
So, for towns, for patrol coverage, we give quite a bit of a discount for that. My normal rates are anywhere from $38 an hour plus mileage, all the way up to $60 an hour on after-hours in weekend-type situations where I typically have to pay overtime. For your community, for the towns that are entering into contracts, it's $30 an hour.
Okay.
So that covers everything. It covers the cost of the deputy, his uniform, his or her uniform, mileage for the cruiser, maintenance on the cruiser, everything. So it's $30 an hour. So, you know, maybe a good place to start would be, take what you've allocated for the constable in the past, for the entire benefit package, the hourly rate, the cruiser, everything, and just divide that by 30 and see what kind of, you know, hours you come up with for the year, and then figure out how you want to manipulate that and use it.
Right.
It'd probably be a good starting point.
Now, as far as any liability to the town, should we enter in a contract with you, does the town host any liability?
Not to my knowledge. We've never had... I've been sued before, unfortunately, and we've never had a case where it was directed back to a town. We carry our own liability insurance. And even though we're entered into it, I mean, we have contracts with every entity that we do business with. So I think the town is covered and protected in that respect, and that's something that, you know, you'd probably have to talk to your attorney about. But we've never seen a town sued based on anything that the Sheriff's Department has done.
Now, excluding you, I think we have three sheriffs that are living in the town of Powell. Am I correct in that, or...
I think so. Three?
Yeah, three.
And those definitely two.
Yeah, there's three of us.
Three of you. Would those three gentlemen, should we enter in a contract, would they be the ones to patrol this town, or would it be any given sheriff at any given time?
So that's a negotiable thing. If you folks wanted to tell me, "We want so-and-so to do 30 hours a week in our town." You know, I approach this as you're the customer, and I'm supplying the service. So we want you happy. If you want Joel to be down here 30 hours a week, you got Joel. You know, barring all of the calls in sick or vacation time or whatnot.
Sure.
You know, we can arrange it that way. Or it can be random. You know, that's pretty much up to you.
Traffic enforcement, et cetera, on roads. If you cite somebody with a citation or a ticket, what becomes of that fee, if you will? Do we get a percentage? Do we get, you know, how does that work if... And I believe me, I'm not looking to...
Yeah, yeah, no. Well, let me put the disclaimer out there.
Yes.
We pull people over and write tickets for public safety, not to generate revenue. That's certainly generating revenue is not our goal. It is, however, a circumstance of what we do. And I'm not sure about how the formula works, but when we write a ticket, a percentage of it goes to the state, a percentage of it goes to the Victims Assistance Fund, and then whatever's left over trickles back to the town. It goes into your general fund, you do with it as you please. So there will be some return on your investment. How much of it is... You know, I'm not going to guarantee that you're going to get anything. I don't get involved in it. We don't receive any of the revenue. It gets... The check gets mailed directly to you folks.
From who?
From the state.
From the state?
From the Judicial Bureau.
Okay. Okay.
That's just...
Yeah, because, you know, when you start dealing with the state, sometimes it can get convoluted and complicated.
Understood.
So, and this is, we're really fact-finding right now.
Yep.
And personally, I know you... The Sheriff's Department is an outstanding organization, and we need something here in Powell for our citizenry. I pretty much think you gentlemen would agree with that. We need something on some type of basis.
The Wild West, if we can.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's the other thing. Like each community that we serve, that we enter into contract with is different. They have different priorities. For example, some towns don't want us out on the main drag. They want us out on the back roads, checking camps, checking, you know, people's second homes, that sort of thing. Other towns are more concerned with the speeding complaints that they get out on the main drag, and that's where they want us. So the select boards typically get to focus our priorities, and we're okay with... You know, we understand that when we go into one town, what you want is different than what another town wants. So you have the ability to sort of craft our agenda. Now, I don't... It doesn't mean that our discretion goes out the window.
Right, of course.
It just means that, you know, we know that when we come to Powell, your main concerns are maybe, you know, following the school bus and making sure nobody's running the red lights, because you've gotten a lot of complaints about that. And those priorities may change from one week to the next. So, you know, we're very open to helping you with those sorts of priorities. We're not just focused on, you know, our own agenda. It's whatever the community wants us to be doing.
Okay.
I'm new here, Chad. Do you know what our problem spots are, or...
I haven't heard. I can tell, you know, just because I live here.
I hear of I, so...
You know, I live here, so I, you know, I see some of the things myself. But once... What we see typically is when we enter into a contract and people know, we get citizens that call our office, and we'll email us and tell us that there's issues, they get on our website. So I think, you know, once if and when we do this, the problems will become known to us.
You're not familiar with any of it off...
Not off the top of my head. We don't get a lot of...
Do you get many complaints, Linda?
No.
Citizens?
No.
Break-ins?
No.
Speeding?
No.
You certainly can. I'll recognize you in just a moment. As far as the patrolling of the town, as you said, we could identify with you, say, "We'd like this done," or "that area," or whatever, blah, blah. How about reporting to the Board? To keep us abreast of things and to let us know if there are certain situations we, as a Board, should be notified, or the public itself via CAT TV? Would it be possible for... I'm not necessarily saying you, Chad.
Right.
But because, you know, I'm sure you've got many more important things to do than report to the select board, but...
That's a good question, though. Is that normal format to send a report on what...
We can do it in many different ways. Some communities only want a written report of what we've done. Some, you know, may prefer us to come to a meeting monthly, maybe quarterly. We're open to whatever you want us to do, and we can just put that into the contract so that everybody's on the same page, so...
And also...
An officer to be here, you know, at every meeting. We can do that.
And also, too, if there's an identifiable problem that you think should come to the select board, you would then approach us and say, "Hey, I'd like to get on the agenda for the meeting for blah, blah, blah."
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, your name again?
Michelle.
Michelle, you had a question?
Well, because you had just asked the gentleman about... Or you asked about what you thought the issues were. I've lived it for between six and seven years, and I know traffic, speeding, and reckless driving around here. So, I mean, and I know we had a constable, but didn't really seem to do anything. But I think if we actually had a sheriff's presence, it might help. I mean, I've come down 346 and have people pass me on the double as I'm turning onto Cedar Hill. And that's one of the biggest things I've seen since I've lived here, is traffic issues.
And I've had complaints on Barbers Pond Road and Middle Powell Road. People have called me up. As a matter of fact, we even moved the speeding, speed limit signs up closer, and we've tried to do what we can as a select board, but I really think that there needs to be... Even for second homeowners, I mean, they pay taxes, you know, and if somebody's concerned and sheriff wants to do a drive-by, or is requested to do a drive-by, you know. So I think with that being said, we have a rate now, and I think we, as a Board, as you said, have to sit down and decide, because we did have money budgeted, as you know, for a constable, and figure out what that will get us as far as citizenry protection.
Right. And keep in mind, too, that the hours can be flexible. It doesn't have to be, you know, if you have just one person doing it, that person may want to work an eight-to-four or a nine-to-five day. So that may not be, you know, a practical application for the town, because you may want to stagger the times, you may want to keep it random so that, well, okay, it's Monday at eight, I know the sheriff's going to be sitting here today.
Right.
So if you keep it more random, you know, you never know when they're going to be here, and people maybe will change their habits a little bit.
Well, again, too...
And you also have the ability to... Let's say you wanted to really put an emphasis on several roads at the same time, we could have more than one person here using those hours, so it doesn't have to just be one person on control. It could be more of a, you know, we're going to really blanket and target the area on a Friday night with two or three deputies all at once, so...
Now, should you get, and forgive me if I'm jumping the gun here, but should you get some more federal grants or anything like that? Would any of that, if we contract with you, carry over into... Could we get a bigger bang for our buck, I guess?
That's what you're doing. You know, when we get a grant, it's county-wide, but we certainly focus and target our areas based on the need, based on where we're seeing, whether it be, for example, the DUI grant. If we're seeing a high number of crashes involving DUI-related stuff, that's where we're going to target. So if that happens to be here in Powell, then that's where our focus is going to be. If it's a speeding grant, if, you know, we're getting a lot of complaints on certain roads, then that's where we're going to direct our time.
Click at your ticket.
So yes, the town will see additional coverage if and when we receive those grants.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Sure. No, go ahead, please.
First one is illegal dumping. Is that something you'd be... Provide that service to?
Yep, again, whatever...
Because that has been an issue.
If you say that's what the priority of the town is, and that's what you want us to focus on, then that's what we'll do.
Okay. Elections, yearly elections, we have at the firehouse. As a rule, we've had a deputy... We've had a constable there in the past. That would be something you could provide also.
Absolutely.
Okay. Off-roading issues. Couple areas. One of them's Buckley, up behind Verdmann Outing Club. Pretty rough area up in there.
We have four-wheelers, snowmobiles. I mean, if you tell us, "We want you to go up on the four-wheeler and do X, Y, and Z," then, again, it's, you know, you set the priority in the tone.
That's something you put another search...
Yep, absolutely.
Is there anything you don't provide that we... Okay. Well, I figure it may be easier to say that than to, you know, is there anything that the Bennington County Sheriff's Department would not normally provide?
I mean, as long as it's within the scope of what we do, I mean, you know, I guess we can certainly think outside of the box. If we can come up with a way to do what you need us to do, we'll do it. You know, we're open to that. Again, you're the customer, I'm providing the service. You know, we try to bend over backwards to meet everyone's needs, so...
Okay.
Speed's definitely an issue. I know that's been... See a lot of...
Typically, that's what we see, are the, you know, the quality of life issues that, you know, the people are out with their kids or dogs or whatever, and, you know, people are speeding down the road, and then you get the call, and you get the call, and, you know, those seem to be the most of the typical complaints that we try to handle and ease people's worries about, so...
Right. And as I said, and, you know, I know the state police have their hands full, and, you know, we may not see that immediate action, and that's because they may be busy.
Right.
Okay? But if they're not, they're down here.
Yep.
And we all know that, and they do a fantastic job. But this would give us a direct venue. And would it be okay if the select board had the few people that are going to patrol Powell had their cell phone numbers or whatever, so that if there was a need to be contacted? Is that something doable, too?
Yeah, the department-issued cell phones are for publication.
Okay.
Yes, that's doable.
Any other questions?
I'm pretty sure they're going to answer at two in the morning, but...
Yeah, yeah. I know.
You'll have the number, so...
Any other questions from anybody in the room here that's a Powell citizen? Any questions from the select board?
[inaudible].
Okay, well, I ask you to be patient with us. There's a lot of numbers to go over here and to some discussion, but you will hear back from us.
Okay.
And in the meantime, we do appreciate the time that you do spend here and the job you do, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Let me know if you need anything else.
All right. Thank you, Chad. Thanks a lot, Joel. Okay, next up is our residents. And if you would all like to speak, I encourage you to come on over here so everybody can know everybody. We met these three ladies here. If you would just introduce yourselves to... For Linda and the townspeople, starting with you.
I'm Ed Haley. I live in Powell on 346.
Okay. And you, sir?
My name is Steve McKay. I live in Powell on 346 as well.
Okay. So I know that I did see a video regarding a 93-year-old man and Mr. Bill Botso. I did happen to see that video, and what concerns do you have?
I just have a statement to read to you guys, and then if anybody else has anything, then they can jump in with that. Gentlemen, I know you have many issues to discuss this evening, so we will be brief. We are here this evening to ask if the select board is aware that Powell Fire District Two wants to sign a contract with Green Lantern to install a solar plant on top of the town water supply and local aquifer to cover shortfalls in their budget. You are aware. As you can see by the letter we submitted, there are better ways to make the fire district financially sound that they have not considered. They have also not considered the short-term and long-term effects of solar panels placed on top of a town water source. Some residents are aware of this proposed solar plant, as you can see by the signatures on the letter, while many others are not. This decision cannot be made without transparency to the people on the town water and also the people that will be affected by this solar plant. We are asking the select board members to agree to weigh in to the Public Safety Board process, should it come to that. We would like you to submit comments to the developer during the pre-application process, and then do so again after the petition has been filed. We also ask that you hold a public hearing on the proposal during the pre-application process. The select board does have a role to play in protecting its citizens. Perhaps the select board or other residents have a better location for a solar plant that is beneficial not just to Green Lantern, but the town we live in.
Now, I have a couple of questions here, and I'm not really well-versed in... I mean, I know we have the big solar fields down here at the racetrack. uh, I mean, I know we have the big solar fields down here at the racetrack. Uh, what are the potential hazards of a, a solar field being installed on top of a wellhead? I mean, from what I see down in, uh, the racetrack is that there are concrete pillars, a framework, and then the solar panel and wiring, I guess, correct? Am I pretty close on that? Uh, are there chemicals or something involved with the makeup of these solar panels?
I, I can speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, yeah.
Um, the, the panels are filled with several, um, toxic chemicals, cadmium, uh, cadmium arsenic being one of them. Um, they're in a fine particulate form, um-
Like a powder.
They're like a, yes, like a powder, and, um, they are encased inside of the solar panels. However, if something were to happen, they were to degenerate, if a tractor trailer were to run into them, these come out. Um, the other thing is they often encase the inverters, and they put the, the cement pillars down on the ground, and what will happen is it displaces, um, the, the drainage area of the water on top. And so there's just ways, there's so many potential problems. There are no studies done that show a twenty-year, which is what the contract is for, a twenty-year, um, solar plant on top of drinking water. And so there's a lot of little studies that show, oh, it'll show, well, we, we think it's safe, we think it's safe, but there is no study done that shows a twenty-year effect of these things. And, um, so as far as those kinds of concerns, there's a myriad other concerns. Um, also the electromagnetic field, um, that's why people don't want to, usually they don't put houses underneath the big power lines, you know, people are, that, that field that comes around, and that will definitely happen with these inverters. Um, that's one of the-
They generate, they generate-
They generate an electromagnetic field as well. Um, there was, um, a school in La Quinta, California, I believe, um, they noticed a cancer cluster. They had built this, a solar field right behind a school, and the children were in droves showing up with, um, childhood cancers. Um, those are the health concerns, you know.
How big of a field are they looking for? How, 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 how many acres are we talking about here? Are we talking one, two, five, ten?
Four, four and a half.
Four, four and a half acres.
You know, it's the whole, it's the whole field.
I, I have an idea where that is.
Typical public policy is, don't mess with water, the water that people need to lift. There are many more places that these can be done. They can be put more at the track. They can put them on brownfields. Why the risk of putting it on the water that a hundred and forty families get town water, but also the aquifer to the other wells that are around there? There's, there's, there's no reason to chance something like that when you're just trying to cover a budget shortfall when things like refinancing their bond, um, looking at fiscal responsibility in their, in their spending. We have at least four pages of questions for the water board about expenses that they have. They get free water when they're going and shutting off water on people that owe ten dollars. You know, so free water, there's, there's just, there's so much, they're trying to get seventy-five hundred dollars because that's what Green Lantern will pay them a year. So we are trying to talk to them about, and they said to us, the only reason we are doing this is for the seventy-five hundred dollars. So we're trying to come up with the information to show them how to make that seventy-five hundred dollars so they don't have to ruin the town water and ruin their relationships with people in town, because the people that do know about it are not happy. And I mean, we're a small community, so, you know, you really can't go irritating your neighbors that badly, I mean.
Every, every person that lives around there showed up to the, um, to the last meeting and not-
At the water board.
At, at the wellhead.
At the wellhead and, and at the water board, and there's not one person that lives in the surrounding area that, at, at that meeting that agrees with, with putting this in. So I, I think some of the people, um, you know, like your very well illustrated speech says, some of the people just don't, don't understand and don't know because it's not going in right across the street from their house, but there's still potentials that they could, there's a risk that they could be affected down the line. Um, and I hope, um, my main question was, have they come to you and have you approved any type of, um, I would think they would need some type of zoning permit or some type of, I know there's no other regulations in Vermont right now because the legislative has met up in Mount Pili a few weeks back, and, um, they're trying to put some regulations on things probably very similar to this, right? Where they can put panels on water, where they can put panels in proximity to houses, um, things that just aren't established in Vermont yet, but as you see, um, they're going to keep popping up in places.
Oh, they are cropping up all over.
The investors are going to keep making money because they get their, their tax write-offs, and, and people love the fact that they can just come to Vermont and, and throw, um, throw these up everywhere. So have you, have you approved anything, or do you have to approve anything?
Um, I, I, I think if anything, it would be the DRB and the zoning, uh, board, um-
The board, rather, they emailed the research, the board asked me to do last week, the, this board has no-
Jurisdiction. You know-
Except for what I said about the holding, holding, yeah, the pub, the public, public service board?
Public service board.
Yeah, and the, um, and also having a meeting of, of the town and, you know, I mean, it, the, the, the train goes by, it's going to be shaking, goes, shakes their houses. They're going to shake the panels. How safe is that?
Well, I, I mean, the train goes right by down in North Pownell here too, and that's quite a bit larger.
But it's also, it's also not on top of the water.
Uh, no, I, I, I get that too, but I, I, I think that, uh, ground vibration, I don't know how many years those have been in, but, uh, again, it, it, it's something that's put in, and we know it's there, but we never hear anything of it. It, I guess I don't know what the, the risk factor or the danger factor is, and I'm, I'm not being pro or con here. I just don't know.
Neither, neither do they. That's the problem.
No one knows.
They don't, they don't know.
The race track, the one we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's the only other one we have.
I think the ground at the racetrack, for one thing, it's removed from the highway. This is like right on 346.
Right, I know exactly where you're talking about.
And, and, uh, and that down there seems to be a much more stabled concrete thing from the stables years ago. I mean, that's a nice, uh-
The ground is already ruined and denatured.
It's, it's basically a floodplain across the street from you.
Yeah, and it seems like the board, the water board has, uh, is like just can run roughshod with these few volunteers that get their free water, and they have no responsibility. Like if, say they polluted that aquifer, and what, what would happen then if people were sick? Would they be able to sue the town? Because they don't seem to have any responsibility. They're like writing their own ticket.
I think that's privately, I think it's privately owned, uh, that, that whole water.
By the ratepayers.
You know, um-
Right. Would the town be liable, say, if people were sick?
No, I, I am no lawyer, okay, but, uh-
I mean, that's something to think about, you know.
Well, it is, but if, if we have nothing to do with it, if we don't collect fees, uh, or usage of it-
Right.
Per se, the town, you know, um, and I understand what you're trying to do and what you're not trying to do, but I, I don't, I don't think, and again, I'm not a lawyer, I don't think that the town of Pownell can be held responsible. I think the water board or who maintains that water system, okay, and they must, I would assume, have some type of bond or something to ensure them-
There's, there's a bond, but the problem is, is that in the state of Vermont, the municipality, um, volunteers are not responsible for anything. So if the town is not responsible-
See, I think it's a private water company, and I, I, I really think the term municipality, I, I, I'd be careful using that because it's, it's an entity unto its own.
Right, they're their own governing body.
Right, and, and-
It's like a corporation, right?
Yes, it's almost like a private corporation, okay, and, uh-
But it has a municipal bond from the state of Vermont, right? So it has a municipal bond that they take out, uh, to, to, um, for the upkeep and for the initial startup of this, right? But if the water board is not responsible, the town is not responsible, and the ratepayers have no say on what actually happens, to me, that's not American, right? That's not, I mean, it seems like we're, like we're, like we're coming to these meetings, we're supplying ideas, we're, we're providing financial, you know, data that, that backs up. Uh, I'm looking personally into helping them refinance so that we can try to, to cut the rate down, but in the end, I mean, if you guys don't have to put a zoning, if you guys don't have to allow a zoning permit, and they're not responsible for anything that happens to my kids, then it seems like it's just, it is the wild, wild west, like you were saying before about not having cops around and-
I'm sure that, that they would have to go, well, I'm not sure.
The Water District is governed by A and R, the state. They have water resources people.
Have you been in touch with them?
The Water District is governed by-
Agency of Natural Resources.
Okay, so I called, um, the people that provide the emergency funding, the emergency bonds. I believe it's the environmental, and they said that because, um, that they'll provide a bond for, or they'll provide a grant if something breaks, but it's not just for, you know, a seventy-five hundred dollar shortfall in their budget. So I, I researched that aspect.
There, there is a licensed operator of that water system down there. Someone holds license to run that system, and they are governed by Agency of Natural Resources.
So that operator, so we got, so we got the paperwork for, um, the financial records that we requested, and there is a bill on there every month to an operator. And when I looked up and I, um, searched for his name, it comes up as the operator for the two trailer parks, is what it, what it says, but I really believe he's the operator for the entire system.
There is. There is an operator for the system.
So that person is responsible and governed by-
Somebody signs the daily paperwork for that system. Someone signs for monthly and quarterly reports.
I mean, they have to do testing.
Water testing reports are done in regulations.
They have, you know-
Absolutely.
They have several violations, though, that haven't even been taken care of. So who's signing on?
Again, Agency of Natural Resources oversees public water systems.
We should, we should talk to them then, if, if that's the only governing system or the only governing agency of this corporation is.
Well, e- even so, I, I, I believe, I don't know, Linda, maybe you could help me out on this, is that if they're going to put something in like that, do they have to go before the zoning board?
No.
They, they-
They go to the public service board.
Public service, right. Which you guys can call a public hearing of the town, and that will have weight with the public service board. The public service board doesn't want to deal with a bunch of people that do not want this.
Well, also because of the lack of solar siting regulations in Vermont, um, what's happening is that, and that, is that, um, they can literally just put them anywhere, and it's written now into the way we do things that these, um, companies don't have to pay attention to the bylaws. They don't have to go to the planning commissions. Um, the only thing that we were told might have any weight at all is the town plan, but again, that's only with the public service board. So these solar companies get to go direct from their desk in California to the very top of the three people in the public service board and get it approved, whereas everything else you want to put in, you have to talk to the people of the town, you have to talk about the bylaws, you have to talk about the zoning laws, you know, and, and there's just, there's a big, big, huge loophole for these companies, and that's what's happening now. And they are saying that Mount Pili, the solar siting regulations aren't going to be until next year. So for this one in particular, there's a sense of urgency.
What's, what's their timeframe down here? What, what?
They want it up and running by October.
And like I said, between the bond, um, and raising, raising the, the rate of, of the water, because it hasn't, hadn't been raised in like ten years. Even if you raise it five, ten, fifteen dollars, and maybe if the water board actually paid, because other water boards pay for their water. They don't get free water. So if they paid their fair share, you get to seventy-five hundred dollars pretty quick without having to ruin the gateway to Vermont, have it on the town water.
What about putting a cell phone tower on it? I have, you know, I mean, if you're trying to mitigate this, and they're trying to-
I think it's too low there, for one thing.
Well, you get that whole valley.
Right.
You get, you get that shot of that whole valley. I have, if, if I, I'm just throwing this idea out, maybe you want to call Verizon or Nextel or Vtel or somebody and say, hey, maybe, because they pay a couple of grand a month.
They don't seem to be interested in any ideas, I think.
That's, they, they don't-
We had a list of ideas.
They have their idea. This is what they want to do.
This is it, and, you know, yeah.
And they don't care.
So, so, I'm gonna, uh-
But if there's any health issues at all to worry about, it seems like A and R would definitely take care of any issues that even may possibly happen.
How and when would it be too late?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't-
That's, you know, there's too many unknowns as far as the health, besides the many other mitigating factors that lowers property values of houses that are, that are sitting around it, up to thirty percent in a lot of areas, and I'm not going to be directly across from it. I'm down the street.
That's pretty well shielded. I mean, you got the railroad tracks, you got trees, you got the, the-
She lives, it's in her front yard. It's directly.
Directly in front of your yard.
It's right in his front yard.
I mean, there are a few-
It's in Haley's front yard.
Um-
Right in front of him.
It's, it'll definitely affect my-
So, are you, what are you looking for, a public forum on this? I mean, i- is the water board, i- if, if we hold a, a public meeting on this, number one, is the water board going to come? We can't make it, we can't make anybody come to this, number one. Uh, number two is, what, what would, what would the outcome be about it? I mean, I think it's great you're here tonight on CAT TV, because there might be a, a lot of residents on, uh, the east side of Route Seven that might not know about this.
That's right.
Okay, um, and, and we're all neighbors here too, so, uh-
We are meeting with them at the next board meeting.
Jim?
I would say there's a precedent been set here when the racetrack was going to put a biomass plant into the town, and the people came together like you're doing, and they had meetings, wrote the letters to the public service board. Uh, there's an Act two forty-eight in Montpelier now that should be talking about all this. Uh, Mr. Botso needs to be involved very much. Uh, we're all just laymen. I think, I think we're all trying to find out how it benefits the track financially. Uh, there's those panels, the solar panels going on Quarry Hill. Uh, we're writing a new town plan and certainly talking about, uh, Raymond Harold had a great story just last week about losing control of the town. And the one way that you can stop it is to write it into the town plan. But, but the public service board is the, your protector, power protector. And I think that's the, that's the way, that's the way we had to fight the biomass, and it didn't happen, and it was big bucks there, huge, huge one, who in this poor little water board's got. And, uh, guess what? They got beaten. It's not there.
So, we, we do meet with them at the next water board meeting, and we have questions, and we want to see what their responses are, but if-
I'm sorry, you meet with who?
Oh, sorry, the, the fire district, Ray Bobb and the other four guys, that, because their monthly meeting is, is it the fourth?
It's the May fourth.
It's the fir-, yeah, the first Monday in May. So we're meeting with them again. We have questions as to certain expenses and things like that, and coming back with the ideas and saying, here's the seventy-five hundred dollars, you know, what is next? Are you signing this contract tomorrow? Because then if the case, like, like I said, you know, s- submitting comments that the people in the town, because, because if it comes also from the select board to, to the, uh, public service board, it'll have more weight because they know that, you know, we're, we're working as a community. So, and then if there is a need for a public hearing during the pre-application process, then we would, we would like to have something like that done.
Okay, well, we don't have a full board here tonight, and I, I, I really would like the other two gentlemen to weigh in on this, and I, I hope you don't think that's a cop out, but I, I, I think on something this important.
I'd ask Bill Botso to come here.
Yes, and, and I think our state representative, I know you've met with him, I know I've seen him in the, the videos, et cetera, you know, um, I think he's got to, as our representative, I think he has to write the letter, and he has to start stepping on the public service board a little bit and get some, taking names and numbers. Um, I know we're in a shoebox for time here, um, but I think if you folks keep up your vigil, there's not much this board can do other than the fact that we can support you. That is, uh-
That's all, that's all we want, yes.
Support you or, or not. I don't, I'm not going to-
Or not.
I'm not going to speak for anybody here, okay? But, um, you all are taxpayers, you all are residents of the town, um, and we are the select board, and we, we try to protect our people as best we can when we can. So, um, well, I thank you for coming tonight, and, um, so, how do I go, I guess we're, I don't know, it's-
But we can report back to you about what comes of their May fourth meeting.
That would be great. After the May fourth meeting, if you could, uh, gather your facts, call Linda to get on the agenda just as you did tonight.
Okay.
Um, and hopefully we'll have a, a full board, and, um, and we can go from there. And, um, if it comes down to, you know, just, just looking for a letter for the selectmen that support your position, uh, if the board is in agreement, I don't foresee any problem, but if they're not in agreement, I can't guarantee anything, okay?
I would just ask before you make that, um, you know, obviously, I'm not going to stop you from having discussions, but, uh, before we, um, present you guys with the facts that we're going to be presenting them, so I'm going to develop, we're going to develop together a business case analysis on, on why, you know, how we can generate that revenue and, and what the things are that we're gonna, or that could potentially be put in place instead of this. So I just ask you not to make your, you know, united conclusion before we present with all of it.
Absolutely, because we'll, we'll give, you know, when you're ready to state your case, um, you know, we're, we'll, we'll listen to it all. I mean, uh-
Who else is on the board?
Um, Nelson Brownell and Henry Strohmeyer.
Okay.
Okay? Um, and if there's anything you need to drop off here, uh, so that Linda can photocopy and put in our folders, uh, more information is better than not enough.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Okay, uh, next on new business is fuel discussion, so who wants to-
I can, I can, I can-
Head off on that.
I think, I think looking, uh, this is my short ti- ti- time on the board, um, I think there's a potential for some fuel savings, um, in diesel fuel and in propane. And, uh, I think it's time that we, um, we come up with some information as to what we're using I think it's time that we, we come up with some information as to what we're using gallonage wise and put it out for bid. So we're looking at propane, we're looking at diesel fuel, and we're looking at heating oil.
And heating oil, okay, and currently, right now, we don't put that out to bid, right?
Not every year.
Not every year.
Personally, on my behalf and my job, made a huge savings this year by contacting a few different companies, so.
Okay.
Worth its while.
I mean, look, I'm all for saving money, that's for sure, especially when it comes to the taxpayers' money and my money.
I think it's become real competitive in the last few years, especially with, with businesses and accounts that, you know, can say that we use X amount of gallons a year.
Well, I guess we have to.
Information to back it up with.
I, I think Casey would know what he uses over there, correct? He should have some records of his fuel consumption, or we should even have him here, I guess, too, from the warrants, right?
Yeah, you'd have to research it.
Okay.
Darcy's already started tracking her usage for the propane.
Okay.
Know what our heating is for the plant, 'cause we do a budget.
Okay. Do we have gallons, though? We do, great. All right, so if, if we could combine that information and maybe just put it.
I think RJ seems to have some experience with this, so perhaps probably he could be best to work with.
Sure, you can work with him on it. Would you mind, RJ?
No, I can, no.
At least you can, once you get the figures, you can make some of the calls and say, hey, you know, give us a bid. I, I think that's a good idea to put fuel out to bid, because, you know, yourself, just driving in gas stations, you could save ten cents a gallon in a five-minute drive.
Yeah.
You know, depending on where you look and where you buy.
Absolutely.
You know, so, okay, anything else on that? Okay.
Well, should we, should we make a motion to, if we don't need to?
I'd make that motion.
To.
We, we come up with a summary of what we're using for fuel, and we put it out to bid. I don't know if we need to put it in the newspaper, but we could, we could come up with the.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, if it's, if it's an invitation to bid, it has to be warned, right? Or posted.
Posted.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion?
Second the motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Revisit the variable rate ordinance enforcement section.
So, without a constable, without the sheriff's department at this moment, you can't go ahead and adopt this ordinance with a blank.
Well, does it have to be a law enforcement agent?
I don't think so. I know, I, I see, just as the sheriffs were just explaining that, it's also verbiage is coming through the judicial bureau as far as the fines that were established.
Could we appoint?
But you need to have someone to enforce, to bring that forth to the judicial bureau.
Well, when I'm, I guess what I'm wondering here.
Like, if we still had a constable, that would be your person.
And this is for, this is for haulers? This, this, this variable.
It's for the entire ordinance.
Okay, okay. Pricing and holler registration. But basically, the enforcement part would be on holler, holler registrations, is the way I understood it. We don't have any haulers in our town.
So I don't know who you wanna put in there, but it has to have something.
Oh, we have to put in who the enforcing party is going to be? Yeah.
Enforcement personnel who will that be.
And this has to be done when?
I, this prevented me from moving forward.
Okay.
We need to have this adopted before June Eighteenth.
And we're going to discuss this sheriff at the next meeting, or are we going to?
Well, first of all, we have to, we have to kinda get together and do our homework, and you have the figures, and we have to see, I, I think we all should go home with the budget, we all have a copy of the budget, and.
That's how many hours a week?
You did that already?
Yeah.
But I don't think we wanna jump in that deep, I wouldn't think. But that's something we have to vote on, but.
Again, I think we need a full board.
Yeah.
To, to discuss it publicly and then have it open for comments and suggestions before we make a decision.
So we should put that on, though?
I will not be here at the next meeting, I will be out of town. Probably the following meeting, which is May, oh, I can't see.
Seven, eight.
Seventh?
I think it's seven.
Yes, May seventh. Is that okay?
Yeah, long as Linda has time enough to resolve this other issue, yes.
Okay, okay. I, I guess my, I'm gonna just go back to my original question here. If it doesn't have to be a law enforcement agency, and we have to do this, could we, until we have a law enforcement agency hired, et cetera, could we, perhaps, Tom Shuey, our transfer station supervisor, is this something that he could wear that hat?
With law enforcement authority.
Okay, that's why I asked in the beginning if it had to be law enforcement, and you said no. So it has to be a law enforcement agency, so.
An assumption in a couple of weeks, we'll have that answer one way or another anyway, so.
Yeah.
Why don't we just table it?
How about a motion on that?
Motion, I table it.
Till, till, May seventh?
Yeah.
Second?
I second.
Oh, second, okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Now that I got my paperwork all messed up, is there anything else anybody would like to bring up tonight?
Yes. I guess I'm a little, being new here, I guess I'm a little lost on last week's discussion on the drug testing. Should I put that, should that be put on the warrant for, or the?
Agenda.
Agenda for next week? So it's official, official?
Okay, yeah, if you, if you'd like it on the agenda.
Okay.
To vote on it, sure.
Yep.
They already did vote on it.
Okay, I didn't know how we looked at, so. Did, did you work on that?
No.
Okay.
So do you.
What did you want him to work on?
Uh, the whole, to fill out the policy on the drug thing with the insurance company, and to get established drug and alcohol testing. There's a lot of things in here that have to be filled out as per the town.
So are you, you're basically telling me that was, this is passed and, and? No?
Yes, it is passed, they voted on it.
Okay, so it's, we have to implement it now, correct?
Yes, they voted on, nothing was put on it. Let me put it this way, it wasn't done the way normally we would do a policy.
Okay, I wasn't here, so I guess I need some questions answered here.
Nelson stated for the minutes that he doesn't remember any board discussion on it, so.
But it was voted on.
I don't have any minutes on any discussion of this.
Well, you, you must have something when it was voted on, right? To, to, to accept it?
The, the minutes were here on the table tonight.
Yeah, to accept it, so if it's been accepted, I, I assume that that paperwork's gotta be filled out and, and mailed in. Am I correct or no, RJ?
Yes, I, I assume so. I've never, I, I've read through it, and it's pretty much boilerplate for anything. You know, all the directions are here, it's all pretty much boilerplate, you just pretty much put the town's name and.
Do you have a copy of that, Linda?
I've got one.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty, I read it cover to cover.
All right. Okay, very good, then.
So in other words, are you making that my responsibility to implement this?
I think so.
I think the select board's implementing, yeah. I, I think you just have to do the administrative end and send it, fill it out and send it to leagues of cities and towns.
Linda, I'm sorry, are, are we pretty much done with that? Okay, and, and that'll be taken care of. Roughly how many hours a week did our constable put in?
I wanna say he put in, I think he was elected to do at least thirty-two.
Thirty-two hours a week? Okay.
Does anyone know why the town went for a constable versus a sheriff back? Or has there always been a constable, or?
Always been a constable, I believe, years ago, or a few years, I don't know how many years ago. Several years ago, it was brought up to abolish the constable position and hire the sheriff's department, and it got voted down, but now we are without a, a law enforcement agent, and that's why I think we had discussed, since we're without one, to bring in the sheriff's department, because otherwise we would have to, when you hire somebody as a constable, now you have to make sure he's up to date on all the training, you know, and.
It just seems for that price he threw out tonight that it's kinda hard to beat, you know?
Really, I mean, it's, for the money that we were spending, right, no vehicle, no insurance, no health insurance, no benefits, no uniforms, radios. As a matter of fact, I, I did have a conversation, and there was even talk that they want, the sheriff's department is interested in some, if not all, of the equipment panel has. So that could work into this as well.
Goodness, that's the number you were looking for.
Yes, which I, I, yeah, I have that, right, and I have that right here. So with that being said, is there anything else for tonight's meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye? Thank you very much.